Welcome to the City Council Meeting of April 7, 2022. City Clerk, could we have the preamble, please?
This meeting is compliant with the Ralph M. Brown Act as amended by California Assembly Bill Number 361, effective September 16, 2021, providing for a public health emergency exception to the standard teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Purpose of this is to provide a safe environment for the public, staff, and council members, while allowing for public participation. The public may address the council using exclusively remote public comment options, and the council may take action on any item listed in the agenda. Members of the public may view the City Council meeting by logging into the Zoom webinar. City Council meetings can also be viewed live and/or on demand via the city's YouTube channel, youtube.com/brisbaneca, or on Comcast Channel 27. Archive videos can be replayed on the city's website, brisbaneca.org/meetings. City Council meeting will be an exclusively virtual meeting. The agenda materials may be viewed online at brisbaneca.org, at least 24 hours prior to a special meeting, and at least 72 hours prior to a regular meeting. Meeting participants are encouraged to submit public comments in writing in advance of the meeting. Aside from commenting while in the Zoom webinar, the following email and text line will also be monitored during the meeting, and public comments received will be noted for the record during Oral Communications 1 and 2, or during an item. Email ipadia@brisbaneca.org, text 6282192922, join the Zoom webinar, zoom.us, with ID 99193628666, and the passcode 123456, and the caller number 16699009128. If you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please contact me, the City Clerk, at 415-508-2113. Notification in advance of this meeting will enable the city to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. Meeting's called to order at 7:33 PM. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
I'm here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Lance?
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Here.
And Mayor Mackin?
Here.
City Attorney, could we have a report out of closed session, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We discussed two lawsuits, both of which we received direction on. No action was taken. We will follow up on the direction. And there was a presentation discussion of the status of labor negotiations in the preliminary stages between the city and its employees. No direction or action was taken there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We move to adoption of the agenda. Is there a first and second to adopt the agenda as it stands?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Mackin?
Aye. We move on to awards and presentations. This is April, which is National Poetry Month, and I'm going to read a proclamation. Whereas the Academy of Poets established the month of April as National Poetry Month in 1996, whereas National Poetry Month seeks to highlight the extraordinary legacy and ongoing achievement of American poets. Introduce Americans to the pleasures and benefits of reading poetry, bring poets and poetry to the public in immediate and innovative ways, make poetry an important part of our children's education. Whereas as National Poetry Month, the leadership and direction of the Academy of American Poets is now the largest literary celebration in the world, whereas poetry enhances and enriches the lives of all Americans, whereas poetry is an essential part of the arts and humanities, whereas poetry has produced some of the nation's leading creative artists and has inspired other artists in fields such as music, theater, film, dance, and the visual arts. Now therefore, I, Colleen Mackin, Mayor of the City of Brisbane, do hereby proclaim April 1 through April 30 as National Poetry Month. And this evening, we have our San Mateo County poet laureate, Aileen Casanetto, to accept our proclamation. Aileen, could you please say some words for us?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mackin, honorable council members, City of Brisbane staff and community members. I'm very honored to join you this evening to accept the proclamation. First of all, I wish to thank you for your support of the arts, which is evident in the many programs, awards, and installations the city hosts each year, in particular, the hugely popular Annual Artist Evening of sharing. Poetry is not only a great community builder, it is a way to tell our story. During the pandemic, many people turned to poetry to process and understand the world in the midst of trauma and unrest. Last week, we held commemoration events around the county in honor of our first responders and the families of those we lost to COVID-19. There are no words to express our gratitude to our first responders who worked round the clock, over and beyond what was expected, to get us to where we are today. And I would like to share a poem for everyone who endeavored through the pandemic. Ms. Padilla, if, um, thank you. Take heart. Take heart from a hummingbird, a handful of earth. See how memory bears fruit to carry history, healing, offspring. Listen for sounds gently rising above the hum and din, prayers of one so far from home and kin. Say you remembered to put out heaters with cold water from inflorescent tomcat clovers. Say you are here in lieu of flowers. What did you lose the year of our sheltering? Whom do you honor with the hope you bring? Take heart, listen. Sounds of kindness are bouncing off hard surfaces. Praise bedside care and all its auspices. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Aileen. And I just want to mention, last week, I was privileged to hear some of the fruits of your labor in working with the young poets in San Mateo County. And it was really inspiring just to hear what they had written and you've worked with them. You are an inspiration, and I thank you so much for honoring us tonight with your presence. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, moving on, we're at Oral Communications, number one. Do we have any member of the public wishing to speak to an item that's not on tonight's agenda?
Hello, Mayor, I don't see any raised hands. And I don't, have not received any written correspondences or text messages.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the Consent Calendar. Is there anyone wishing to remove anything from the Consent Calendar? And if not, I will entertain a first and second to approve the Consent Calendar, which tonight consists of items B through H.
So make a motion to approve the Consent Calendar's Item B through H.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Mackin?
Aye. Thank you. We move on to new business. Tonight, we have City Manager Salary Adjustment and Contract Modification. Item I, under which is an item under which the council will consider adopting the resolution. It will be confirming a revised pay schedule for the city manager, approving a related Third Amendment to the city manager's employment agreement, and authorizing the mayor to sign the Third Amendment. Resolution is in the Agenda Packet for Item I. The resolution provides for three changes to the city manager's employment agreement. In accordance with Government Code Section 54953(c)(3), the three changes to the city manager's salary and benefits would be, first, to increase the city manager's biweekly salary to $11,040 as of the first full pay period of April 2022; second, to extend the city manager's term in office to April 30, 2023; and finally, to provide that the city manager shall also be credited with 80 hours of administrative leave in August 2022, but such administrative leave must be used by April 30, 2023, or it will be lost. Do we have any council discussion? Anyone? And, City Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to make public comment?
Hello, Mayor, I don't see any raised hands, and I have not received any correspondences via text or email.
All right, then, I will entertain a first and second to adopt the resolution confirming a revised pay schedule for the city manager and to approve a related Third Amendment to the city manager's employment agreement, authorizing the mayor to sign the Third Amendment.
Second.
Roll call, vote, please. City Clerk, you're muted.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Mackin?
Aye. Next, Item J on our meeting agenda. Item J calls on the council to consider adopting a resolution updating the city's master pay schedule to reflect the city manager's new hourly rate, given the council's proposal for the resolution confirming a revised pay schedule for the city manager under Item I. As is noted in the Agenda Report for Item J, state law and regulation, as well as CalPERS' guidance, require that the city post a master pay schedule that accurately reflects all of the city's pay schedules in a single document. Given the City Council's approval of an amendment to the city manager's employment agreement under Item I, the City Council must therefore act to amend the city master pay schedule to bring it into conformance with the new city manager's revised compensation. Specifically, the council must amend the schedule to reflect the city manager's new compensation as: monthly, $23,920; biweekly, $11,040; hourly, $138. A revised master pay schedule that reflects these changes is included in the Agenda Packet under Item J as Appendix A. And do we have any council discussion? Anyone? No? Any public comment, City Clerk?
Madam Mayor, I see no raised hands.
Okay.
I have not received any written correspondence via text or email.
Oh, thank you. Is there a first and second to adopt a resolution updating the city's master pay schedule to reflect the city manager's new hourly rate?
I make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Mackin?
Aye. We move on to Item K, that's a Plan to Improve Parking Issues in Central Brisbane. And the purpose of this item is to receive council feedback on a proposed plan to improve street parking availability in central Brisbane. Could we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. We got to this item more quickly than I expected. I wanted just to give you a little bit of background. The Complete Streets Committee, as you know, has studied parking challenges based on hearing from residents, and they started out by doing a survey. We walked, six streets were randomly selected, some in the R1 district, some in the R3, and one in the commercial zone on visitation, and they were a block. So we went to six random blocks, same time, and counted, actually recorded three digits of license plates, so we could see if there was consistency, but counted cars, and then looked at that against how many street parking spaces there were based on lengths between driveways. And I did have, I wanted to correct a slight error in the report, is that on visitation, we did the survey at noon. The other areas were done in the evening, visitation was done at noon. And we found that, on average, they were 90% full, 80 up to 100 at that time, at that dinner hour or at noon on visitation, there just was not, there was very little space remaining. I also wanted to reflect back on Traffic Advisory Committee, that was a precursor to the Complete Streets Committee, and they talked a bit about parking. I staffed them, and they met quarterly, and they did a survey back in 2008, 2009, so I can look back over that, and they got 200-something responses, but at the time, they had, they had, they only offered, you couldn't answer multiple questions, so we asked, um, what's your preference on residential parking programs? No changes, permit program, or the third option was enforcement, fines and/or towing of signs prohibiting parking on certain city streets during street cleaning. So we used to do street cleaning on all the streets in central Brisbane, but we didn't enforce parking anywhere but visitation, and many times, the street sweeper was simply driving up the middle of the street, so we discontinued it because there wasn't an appetite to enforce on that type of thing. So at that time, back in 2008, we, around half of the respondents said, we don't want any changes, 25% said they wanted a permit program, and 25% said, let's enforce street sweeping. And again, we didn't offer them the chance to respond on multiple things, so they had to choose one of those three. So now, compare that to the survey that was done last year, right? Last year, I believe, and we got 70% of residents, we had 300-something, 329 respondents, and 70% said, yes, please do something. Parking is really hard. We're having trouble. I'm having trouble on my block, I see it being a problem in the city. And so we proposed some similar type of things, and we got, as I said in the report, in both, both cases of a permit program and of bringing back street sweeping, but actually enforcing it, 64% saying they either strongly supported or somewhat supported some, an option like that. So the committee took all that, you know, into their process, and wanted to start with something that was a little bit lighter than, you know, you're getting tickets and you have to register your vehicle and all of that. So they wanted to start kind of a PR campaign that they coined, be a star, move the car. And I think they imagined the process would be that someone would say, I'm gonna clean out my garage, and staff person would go and see that they had a full garage, and then come back and see that they'd emptied the garage, and there'd be a small reward, like they'd be entered into a raffle to win something, but it would be like, you know, dig the neighbor, do what you can, here's a good chance to make more space on the street. And then they proposed that we would go back and redo those counts and see if there was a change. And if not, then the next step was, I called this parking permit light, because no one would have to come in and get a permit. Still, if they had their car on the street all the time, they would get a ticket when the street sweeper passed through. And this would obviously take resources to be able to enforce, write those tickets, and, but the idea is that people that are not moving their cars and are storing excess cars on the street, that this would be an inconvenience to them, and might encourage them to minimize the excess cars that they stored and create some space on the street. So then, that would be the second phase, and we'd implement that for a period of time, and then do another data collection and see if that affected a significant enough change. And if not, then go to the third step, which would be a parking permit program. And the committee thought that that would be, and we're talking about central Brisbane, would be citywide or that area wide, because there is concern that if you just do a block-by-block program, that cars just move to the next block outside of the zone that does a permit program. And we didn't get into specifics of, you know, I think the concept would be in the evening on residential streets, and in the daytime in the business district, at the times that you would want to turn over. And the program, you know, we would end, would be put to the community for a vote. So then you've got a kind of eye-in and support. You're not gonna get everyone to agree, but then most people, if it passes, would have said, yes, I want this, we're ready for this now. Whereas 12 years ago, the community didn't sound like they were ready for it. So I can give you more stats, but I, kind of, this is, to get feedback from the council, we've talked to the liaisons, and there were concerns, and there were pluses and minuses discussed of each of these, so committee was, said, you know, we could refine this a lot more, but we want to know if the council supports us moving forward, to know that this three-step plan makes sense to us, or certain parts of it make sense to us, or here's the direction that we think we should go.
Um, does Commander Garcia have something he wants to add to this before we go to council questions?
Madam Mayor, I do not at this point. It just depends on what council would like to do, to do forward. I mean, we could obviously accommodate all these.
Okay, thank you, Commander Garcia. Councilmember Davis, would you like to start, please?
Sure. Um, I just had a few things. I mean, I, I see like the benefits and drawbacks of all the solutions. I don't feel like any of them are particularly like, oh yes, that's a winner. I just think that, I just think that this issue is really a hot-button issue, and people, you know, have really fierce opinions on both sides, which makes it really difficult. And I think trying to solve it, none of the, none of the solutions are really that exciting. And that's not, that's not any reflection on, you know, the committee or the work that's been done. It's just that all of, the whole situation is just kind of a nuisance to try to figure out. So my, my concern is with street sweeping. I just, I remember we used to do street sweeping when I was a kid, but, you know, if we start asking people to move vehicles, I can just see this becoming like a severe nightmare on Kings, and a severe nightmare on Humboldt, because you're having, everyone, you know, there are people who maybe can clean out their garages, that incentivizes them to do that, or they can park in their driveway. There's a lot of people that they simply don't have, that I can think of a house on Kings right now that doesn't have a driveway, and it doesn't have a garage, and it relies, I actually can think of two, and they rely wholly on street parking. And so then to try to relocate your car when you're on Kings, you know, to another block, maybe that would be Humboldt then, that's a, can be a long walk for people, especially if they're elderly or, you know, it's late at night, and then you come home, and that creates all these parking issues, let's say, on Humboldt, on the week when there is street sweeping on Kings. So I can, I can see that we could make, in an effort to try to fix this issue, we can actually exacerbate parking wars by implementing street sweeping on certain streets because of people trying to, you know, relocate their vehicles. So that concerns me. The other part that concerns me about--
Councilmember Davis, did you have a question somewhere in there for staff?
Oh, sorry, I just went right into discussion.
I, no, I just--
Actually, yes, I do, no, I do, I do.
Okay.
Um, my, my question is, you, we don't have a code enforcement officer right now, correct?
I believe we just hired one.
Yeah, we actually did just hire one, yes, and he started two weeks ago.
So we have somebody that can, that can go ahead and be able to enforce tickets to those non-moving vehicles?
Um, our full officers do most of the time, and our community service officer does that, but we always have someone on that can do--
And the other concern I have is really on the street sweeping itself, because, you know, it was my, it was my understanding that we were contracting with South City to do street sweeping on visitation in San Bruno, and then they, half the time, didn't show up, and then it's been difficult, you know, to have like a consistent, a consistent schedule with them. So how would we be able to do a citywide, you know, street sweeping on a regular basis if our contractor that we've been using hasn't been working out? Are those issues still present, or has, like, can they support this level of street sweeping, or would we need to invest like in our own vehicle?
Um, so, South San Francisco, that was happening. You're absolutely right. And so at, at a certain point during COVID, they said, we can't support street sweeping at all anymore. So we went back out to contract, and we got a private company now active, so we've been, you know, with the city, with the private company, kind of, back and forth over the years. So we're with a private company that, that we contracted with initially for a couple of months while we put out an RFP, and then they knew our streets, and they, and they were able to be the low bidder, and we've been using them for a year or so, yeah, a year or so under contract, and they're, they're doing very well, and they, I'm sure they would want more work, you know? But the thing that I was imagining the Complete Streets Committee might have fleshed out more, that they wanted to get feedback before looking into it, is, in, in my mind, you could break up the areas into, not quadrants, but segments such that it doesn't have to be so impactful. If you, you have signs, you know, you need more signs on the street, but you wouldn't have to do all of Kings Road on one day. And if it does work like San Francisco, it would only be a couple of hours that they could get in and do the sweep during that time, and it wouldn't have to be at 7:00 AM. Maybe it could be between 9:00 and 3:00, and maybe it's over three or four days in the week, so it doesn't, you know, you don't have blocks on Kings, but if, you know, to the extent that you did, you could do maybe 100 feet or less, and then come back to the next segment on Tuesday instead, you know?
Yeah, like a left side, right side of the street type deal?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I think that, that's probably the way to go. All right, those are my two.
Councilmember O'Connell?
I think having people need to move their vehicles for street sweeping is a good idea, as long as it's financially feasible for us, and I'm not sure that if we go out to contract and have a street sweeper, not sure, are they looking at once every two weeks? Or once a week? What kind of schedule would financially be feasible if we're having to have them here on multiple days to get everything done?
Right, and that's a great question, and that's what committee did, or we have not fleshed out, but we would have to bring that back, the costs and how much time is involved. They're, they're charging us under, it's $4,000 a month, so it's actually less, I think, than they were paying with South San Francisco. But yeah, it would be an additional cost, and the enforcement, we haven't even really explored, or it could be done with existing police staff, or whether there might be some contract made or made that could come and circle around during that time, or, you know, we haven't, we haven't solidified any of that at this point, and that would be a decision point for the council, for sure.
But what does Public Works feel, aside from the parking issues? What does Public Works feel that a needed amount of street sweeping on the, I think it would probably be different on the upper streets than it is on the business streets, because you tend to get more litter with the casual users than homeowners, I would assume. But again, I don't know how often the downtown core needs it compared to the upper streets, or if Public Works has looked into those differences. I know that, say, in San Francisco, the litter is certainly much worse in the financial district and on, on commercial streets than in residential streets, so that they have, you know, a much higher amount of street cleaning that goes on almost daily in a commercial zone, and maybe once a week in a non-commercial zone. So I would want to know what Public Works, besides the fact of street cleaning, because moving your car for street cleaning shouldn't be so that we move cars. It should be so that we keep our streets clean, otherwise it's a non-reason to have the street, street sweeper come. We could have it that you just have to move your car once a week.
Yeah, that's a point. What we were, what we were doing in the past when we did not enforce was, the commercial streets were getting swept once a week, and the residential streets were getting swept once a month. I'd be reluctant to say that's the absolute number the department would recommend now, because we didn't look at it that closely, unless Randy is on, he's still muted, and wants to weigh in, or would, I don't know if we would want to talk to the, you know, NFTs-- or would, I don't know if we would want to, um, talk to the, you know, NFT staff or you want to opine?
I think I would suggest in response to Councilmember O'Connell that once per month would be the most imposed number we would use. It's possible that we would be less than that.
So we're just actually the, the ultimate effect of street cleaning on the upper streets would be to get people to move a non-moving car or get a ticket maybe once a month.
You know, I don't think I would phrase it that way, ma'am. I think what I would say is that also what we are doing is that we are trying to get the organics that are on the upper streets to prevent them from going into the bay and to causing the sedimentation and eutrophication that occurs within the.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Lentz?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, that was my, uh, that was my question, um, in regards to the street cleaning. So Randy, is there, or Karen, is, is there a NFT's, um, requirement that he, did he clean their streets?
So I'll, I'll take that Karen, since I seem to be the lead with our, with our dear friends over there, San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Exactly.
It's yes and no, is the answer. At one point in time, they gave everybody credit for doing that and then they took away the credit for doing that. And so I think what it's really come back to is that the individual cities have to look at their very unique situations and decide, are their efforts for street cleaning solving the problems the regional board is looking at? So in, in answer to Councilmember O'Connell's question, I talked about the sedimentation and eutrophication that occurs within the lagoon. The Regional Water Quality Control Board is not particularly concerned about that. They're concerned about diluteous material, they're concerned about plastics, they're concerned about things such as asbestos getting into the bay. There are other reasons why we would want to pick up things that some might consider trash, which would be the leaf, the organic, the natural organic material in the streets. So I hope that answers your question in a roundabout way, sir.
No, no, it does. I just, you know, um, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm feeling the same way as, as Terry and that, uh, you know, if we're going to do the street cleaning, it should be for a reason for cleaning the streets. And, you know, are there certain requirements from, you know, government agencies that are saying, hey, you gotta do this or you're gonna get a fine? Um, but yeah, I mean, on the upper streets, it is organic matter and, uh.
Primarily, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry, I interrupted you, sir, but you're correct. On the upper streets is not primarily litter, it is natural organic matter.
Okay, and then, um, let's see. So, so Karen, you know, one of the recommendations was, um, that if we went to the permit process, that it would, the recommendation is have voters or residents vote on it. And, um, are, are you aware of any city that, that went to their residents and had them vote on, on a, on a permit? Type of parking system?
That's a good question. I'm not, but I did not look into that. Um, it was the committee came up with the idea and staff was in support because, you know, there is, there's a certain amount of the community that doesn't want government overreach. And, you know, it would just add, like, it would just kind of back it up more than just something that city imposed.
So I, so I would suggest that we are, as a city, are being much more democratic in our process than that than many others. I think many other cities have just very much imposed that upon neighborhoods. And the Complete Streets Safety Committee is suggesting that we open that up to the democratic process, allowing a vote on it.
Sure, sure. And, you know, you've done, I think you're due diligence in trying to do the best you can with the democratic process because you had a robust survey and you got a, you know, a lot of responses. Um, so if you did a vote and maybe you haven't gotten this far down the line, but you know, you, you mentioned that the Ridge, they, they have a different system than Central Brisbane. So would it just be residents of Central Brisbane who vote on this would be a citywide, you know, issue? Have a vote? That's too far down the line?
I think I would need the city attorney or the city clerk to tell us if, how the precincts are split up. I'm, I'm not aware myself.
Unless you're asking for a basic advisory vote, um, in which case arguably you can limit it and some cities do, it's a citywide vote. They're adopting a policy for the city.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Tom, for your assistance on that.
All right, thank you. Those are the only questions I have.
I, I'm just going to interject here. Uh, Councilmember Lentz, you asked if any other cities have gone to actually putting a vote out there. And I did read of a peninsula city, I can't remember if it was Burlingame or if it was Redwood City, don't quote me on it, but someone was considering that because they too are looking at parking problems. And that's one of the options their council will be looking at is taking a vote. So Councilmember Cunningham, questions?
Yes, so I believe we already have in place the ability for each street or each number of houses to petition for permits, parking permits in their particular area. Um, I really like that idea, except for the fact that, you know, I live on a street where parking is abused beyond your belief. Quite frankly, there's 22 cars from one family were parked on our street at one point and it wasn't their cars, it was the cars from their business. So, uh, with, with no parking on Tulare, uh, there's no parking in front of my house. There's no parking in front of about nine homes, nor is there on five of those nine homes, any off-street parking, so there's no driveways or anything. So for a street like Tulare, you know, maybe, uh, parking permits are something that people want to do right away. But splitting it up, Karen, I could imagine would be an absolute nightmare, putting it on the ballot for a vote. You know, if somebody lives on a street where there's not an issue with parking, they're going to say no. I mean, up at the Ridge, I don't know how much problem there is with parking, Randy. You live there, so you would probably know, but I can imagine if you've got reserved parking up in the, in the condos on the Ridge, it's not of interest to you. But if you asked probably 90% of the people on Tulare Street or Alvarado, O'Glen Parkway, Sierra Point, San, San Benito, I'm thinking of the streets that I know have horrible parking issues, Thomas. Um, you'll get a very high yes response. We want permit parking because there are a lot of people who have six or so more vehicles in our town and they park them on street.
So, uh, Councilmember Cunningham, the, the issues up at the Ridge wax and wane as far as parking issues, although they are, they are very quickly assimilating to Brisbane. And there are many residents up there that are filling their garage with things other than their automobiles, uh, which is common for all of us, right? That is, we, we all have our own interests and we all have treasures that end up in our garage and that preclude our vehicles from parking there. Uh, you, you're absolutely correct that we do have a voluntary permit parking program in place. I think the challenge we have found is that over the years, and it includes a study that Karen, uh, discussed earlier, is that we just can't seem to get that critical mass of people that live in that area to all agree. Um, I, I used to joke light-heartedly, uh, that when I was the person that did that survey, we, people would send us notes back and responses would say, just please leave us the HL double toothpicks alone. We're happy with the way things are. Um, and so I don't know how to get beyond that. We have this, we have this really, really weird dynamic where we have a lot of people saying that we have a problem and it needs to be fixed, but we can't seem to get a majority of the people to say, well, we all want to do this voluntary permit parking. So I, I, I struggle with that as I know all of the council members do because we all look at it and say, geez, it's tough. We have a 90% capacity fulfilled problem here, but people don't want to be restricted. So I, I don't know what to do with that. And I think that's why we leave that in your or Gus laps to, to give us some discussion and guidance on the matter.
Well, if we did, if we did have the, the, the street cleaning and we do have the, the serial offenders with multiple, multiple vehicles, it is soon going to become very uncomfortable for them having to move these cars every five minutes. So I don't know, I guess that's my question to you is, you know, how do you, how do you deal with that?
Um, can I ask my question, Councilmember O'Connell, before we go back to you? So I have two questions I'd like to ask. First of all, and, and I don't know who should answer this. When we put something on a ballot, what does it cost us to do that? Anybody?
I, I'm looking for the clerk, ma'am. She might have a sense. Well, I may be guessing wrong.
No? Okay. Well, it costs us money, I know, to put something on the ballot.
It, it will just cost us, um, depending on how many, um, measures are in the, the actual election.
Okay.
When they divide that up between the districts or the cities that have, um, ballot measures.
Okay. And then the next question is for the city attorney. So we currently, it's my understanding, we have an ordinance that says that per neighborhood, residents can get together and petition to have permit parking in place. Is there anything that precludes the council from voting on a resolution instituting permit parking in certain areas of Brisbane? Okay, that answers my questions. So do we have more questions of staff? Because I think we should allow the public to join in before we get into discussing in great detail as a council. Does anybody on council have questions?
My question can wait.
Okay. Cliff, is your question for staff?
It is for staff. So, um, Randy, you, you, you made a comment. I just wanted to just get clarification in regards to the, you said voluntary permit. So when, when the survey went out, you know, I'm looking at the 64%, is that for like a real permit, you know, program or, or voluntary one?
So I, I think I'm gonna have to bounce that back to Karen. I think that was from your staff report.
The, the question was intended to be for a real, for a citywide one. Permit program allowing only, it's not that specific. If you have a question in the attachment. Working finishing strategies of permit program allowing only residents and their guests to park on the street.
Okay, all right. So it is, to me, that, that's pretty clear. The, the, in the, in the, in the survey, the question was, do you want this? And here in the response was, you know, a significant amount of, of the, uh, respondent said, yes, we, we do, and that, not like a voluntary thing, but we need to have a citywide program.
I, I think that's a fair estimate, right? Karen, do you agree that that's a fair estimate? That, uh, the, the current, um, mindset of the citizens that we have a problem and we need to do something to deal with it?
Got it.
Any other questions for staff before we move to the public? Councilmember Davis?
Uh, does staff have a sense of like really what's at the crux of the issue? Is it like majority people who just have like non, like abandoned or vehicles, they just, extra vehicles, they're just not moving? Or do, does staff think that primarily the issue is that there are people with garages and driveways that aren't being utilized? And so those cars are going on the street? Or is it simply that there's just way too many cars per capita for the overall spaces? Because I think if we can try to pinpoint exactly what's going on, then we have a better, like, we have, we have a more information that we need to figure out what is the best solution.
Well, ma'am, I think you've hit the trifecta there. I, I, because I think what we have is we have residences that do not have vehicular access to them. You've noted two on Kings, I know there's a couple on Tulare where you physically don't have a driveway under the garage to drive to. You have many residences where people are not fully utilizing their garages to park automobiles in. And the other issue we have, and I think it's been really exacerbated more in COVID, is that we have more people living in a single-family home that perhaps at the most was designed to accommodate two vehicles in a garage and perhaps one in the driveway. And yet you have multiple, multiple people living there that have more than the two or three cars.
Okay, Councilmember O'Connell, you had a question?
I had a question on the survey, looking at the results. And, and the, the survey's not headed very well. Um, all these responses, and we didn't get the full question, have one person that said yes, is that correct? The, on page nine of 12, three of six?
Those, those ones were for the fill-in other. Do you have another reason? So the survey offered.
Okay, so.
Options.
One thing for the others, these were just all single responses.
Correct.
To, so they basically, one person thought was an issue.
Yeah, and it was difficult format to have all that detail, but I thought when it was only one, it was sort of a one-off.
Okay, and, and basically, I'll wait, the rest is discussion. Thank you.
Okay, looks like we're done with questions for staff. Uh, city clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this?
Um, Madam Mayor, I have not received any written correspondences, X messages. Any member of the public wishes to speak? Can you please put the raised hand button up? There are no, no members of the public wishing to make public comments, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so we move on to council discussion and I'd like to start. I think when I look at this issue, it goes on and on and on. And as Randy and, and Karen have both so aptly set the table with it. It's like, um, when someone parks in your driveway, there are all kinds of people will say, someone needs to do something, but they won't even call the police and say, someone's parked across my driveway, I can't get to work. They always are asking someone else to take care of it. That's common. And you say, why don't you just call the police? Oh no, I don't want to upset somebody. So I think the idea of, of relying on this system, which has been in place for years of everyone complaining about parking, that they can get a petition in their neighborhood to get permits is never going to happen. But I also look at one overriding theme. I was fortunate or unfortunate, depending on how you look at it, to live in San Francisco decades ago when they first started the parking permits. And I knew people in the neighborhood I lived in that had five, 10 cars. And street cleaning was an important component of those permits. And I just watched people move their five or 10 cars. And it was a circus and people would sit in the car and wait for the street cleaner to go. And it did not address the number of cars or the, the scofflaws. And when I look at this, this whole situation, I say, why do we penalize all of the people who are compliant for the few? So for someone who, if we're going to ticket on street cleaning, I just, I would hate to see that. If we really need to street clean, I would suggest we do it during the afternoon. We make it clear, certain areas of town where that's going to happen. But I, I don't, I don't personally like this idea of street cleaning to enforce parking problems. I think the Ridge, it's been mentioned, does not particularly at this time have a problem with parking, although in the survey, some people on the Ridge have weighed in and said, yes, we, we do have somewhat of a problem. I think the only way parking's going to be addressed is if the council is, gets the gumption to say, we'll take care of it for you and, and here's the rules. It makes a leap to, oh, we'll have to have our, our nearest police officer time to go drive around and give tickets. I don't think so. I, I think if, if we have a permit program and the neighbors see that there's these cars they've always wanted to get rid of, they can call and say, there's been a car here for a month, doesn't have a permit. That's really easy. And then we address those as code enforcement. Putting it on a ballot, I can pretty much guarantee you, a lot of people are going to go, oh no, I don't want permits. I want you to fix the parking, but I don't want the permit. That's what they're going to do because they don't really want the permit. They just want you to fix it, but they don't care what the mechanism is. So I think the only mechanism we have is permits. And the only way the permits are going to happen is if this council decides. And the only way the permits are gonna happen is if this council decides, they will be the bad guys and say, okay, we'll, we'll make permits. And how that's designed, so many permits per household, or how it happens, I wouldn't tie it to street cleaning. And I would, at this time, I would not include the ridge. I wouldn't just do it in certain neighborhoods, because I think we've had our, our public work staff point out previously, that then people will just go to another neighborhood. I live down in central Brisbane, we already have cars from the upper streets come down regularly and park their cars down here, because they don't have room on the upper streets on garbage days. So if we're going, if, if the goal is truly to alleviate a problem, which seems to be probably a small portion of Brisbane, who have maybe just too many cars. Let's not penalize everybody, but the permit would take care of that. So those are my thoughts. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Davis?
I think that's, I think that's a good point.
I mean, I think that whatever we choose, these people are gonna be frustrated with the outcome. What I think would be interesting is if we could identify a street that's really impacted, like Tulari, for example. And go to Tulari and say, hey, we wanna do a pilot program where we give you all permits for, you know, like a certain amount of time. And just like really do some studying and observe and see if that, like, see how that goes. And so you can get a sense of like what the ramifications of that are in real time in our own community, on our streets. And if we don't have a, if we don't have a street that's willing to say, hey, we'll be part of this pilot program. And Tulari, I think is a good street, because I don't think you're gonna park from other streets to park on Tulari to go somewhere else. Like, that's really an ice, very isolated cul-de-sac street. Um, and if, if, if the members of Tulari, who we know are very impacted by this issue, refuse to participate in a pilot, and I think that gives us, I think that gives us our answer, that, you know, we can come back to residents and say, hey, you know, we've been attempting to try to fix this, and we can't get anyone to buy into any of the solutions that we think will work. And so, you know, so, so there's like, there's that, there's that information, I think, that we need to say, hey, we tried this, and it either does work, and we can try to roll this out to, to the whole, to all of Brisbane, or this doesn't work, and we need to reassess. I think that, you know, in the city, right, it's two-hour parking if you don't have a permit. So I think that would be a very strenuous, on, very strenuous on our police, police force to try to be, you know, we'd have to have meter maids. And then pretty soon, people realize that it doesn't really matter whether you have a parking permit or not, because no one's enforcing it. And then you just have neighbors calling on neighbors they dislike. So I, I don't, I don't know how well that would work unless we really had the infrastructure. Like, San Francisco has the infrastructure to enforce something like that, and that's why it works there. Um, so, you know, I think also we could invest in, in doing a marketing campaign. Yeah, cleaning out your garage, I think, and using your driveways is a great thing to do. But I think also, like a marketing campaign about, hey, are there vehicles on your streets that aren't moving for more than 72 hours? 72 hours is the rule. And talking about how to communicate that there's a vehicle on your street that's not moving. Because I was looking through the responses, and someone put like, there's a car here with Mexican, with Mexico plates that's been here for two years, and another car from Hawaii that's been here three years. Why haven't you called? Why have you not called to report these vehicles that aren't moving? So I think that that could also do us some good, is trying to have a marketing campaign around that.
Okay, so before we go on, I see we have actually one member of the public wishing to speak. I will allow, although we're already at council discussion. Barbara Ebel, two minutes, please, because we are in council discussion already. Go ahead.
All right, I was a little tardy with my button there. Um, I, I gotta say, when I called the police, because somebody was parked across my driveway, I had to argue with them to ticket the people and try to get them, or find the people and get them to move. It was very strange. And also, I, I really support the permit idea. And if you go back to a city council meeting from 2012, I offered to fall on that sword. So if you still need somebody to try, I'm happy to do that. Um, I've also posted some things on my personal website that I'll send a link to. I won't take your time up with it now, that's all, thanks.
Thank you, Barb. Okay, moving back to council discussion, councilmember Cunningham, got your hand up?
So totally agree with councilmember Davis relative to, I mean, Tulari Street would be a good pilot program, but maybe we choose two or three places. So it's not just, we know this street is a nightmare, but there are a few other streets where it's, where parking is a big problem too. So if we could identify maybe two or three places to do a pilot program, I, I think, you know, Madison was totally right. And we can say, hey, we tried it, here's the outcome, rather than implementing something throughout the city. I've been talking about parking permits for 15 years. So, and yes, there's gonna be people who push back. And you know what? Who are the people who are gonna push back? The people who are probably the people who are six and seven and eight cars and whatever. The, the only concern I have is, um, where we have single-family homes, where there are multiple adult family members living in that home. So, you know, how, how do we address that? The, one, one house here with eight cars, what do I, what do we say to them? You know, we can give a maximum of five permits? Um, or are they gonna give those permits to their next door neighbor? I, I, so I mean, it's those kind of logistics. I mean, not every council needs to have eight cars, but we do have them on this street.
Okay, councilmember O'Connell?
So my, my comments sort of come back to what councilmember Cunningham was saying. Are we going to say that each house gets one, two, three permits? Are we going to say that each residence on a lot, so if you have an ADU and a junior ADU, do you then get three, four, five permits per unit? Are we gonna do it? How would we even implement this to be fair to all the neighbors? And this is a problem that the state mandate to make housing more dense and not require parking is creating for us. Um, we are, you know, encouraging people to maximize housing. And by doing that, we're minimizing, we're taking away all the requirements of parking. Or not all of them, but the majority of them. And so I'm not quite sure how this will ever balance itself out when we're encouraging secondary units. And, and then how do we make an equitable program where, you know, if you have a 25-foot lot or a 50-foot lot or four lots, how do you justify and make it equitable? Or how many permits somebody gets? Do you just have to say that there are registered adults, you know, and in Brisbane, and they get a car permit? So I, I'm, I think it's gonna take a lot more information and, and thought on, from this group and the public to even come up with some equitable solution for a parking program. Because I, I don't, I assume that the complete streets didn't make a recommendation on how to divvy up the permits? Or do you just go pay your $100 a year to the city and get a permit to park however many cars you want?
Okay, councilmember Len?
Um, I'd start off with just a couple more questions to staff. So, um, Randy, in regards to this street cleaning, um, you know, when we have the big storms, you know, the, the storm drains can get clogged up, but your guys seem to, you know, just be on it and, and, and know the, know the lay of land so well. I mean, are, do we have a street debris issue in, in, in central Brisbane?
I think in the upper streets we do. Um, and what we've done is, as a default to not being able to do regular street cleaning, we do go and do some restricted street cleaning in the fall to make sure we capture it. I, I think it's my understanding that really the sedimentation that we're seeing in the lagoon is more a process of beautification than it is of sedimentation. And so what's happening is that natural organic material that's getting into the storm drain gets into the lagoon, it starts to decay, it starts to build up, and that's really what's creating it. It's not so much that we're getting sediment and sand from grating activities anymore. We don't have very much of that going on, but it is, and it is a natural process too, having said that, right?
It's supposed to go to the gate, right?
It describes a natural process. That's to all in the metals. That's what happens there. Uh, does that mean it's a bad thing? I don't know. Um, but certainly there's some interest in the community in, in seeing that that not happen.
Okay, yeah, no, you're right, because that was a pretty significant and strongly agreeing that, that the street cleaning was conducted. Um, so the other question, maybe this is for you, Randy, or maybe it's for Mario. Um, so the parking lot that's on Humboldt and Sammattel Lane. So prior to putting up the signs, and you can't park, I think it's from 2:00 to 4:00 AM, people will park there for a long time, weeks, months, right? You put in those signs, and granted, I walk past there pretty much every day when I'm walking my dog, and there's always a parking spot. Whereas before, it was tough to find a spot there. So it seems like the folks in that part of Brisbane, you know, kinda understood that, okay, yeah, here, here's, here's the sign, I'm supposed to, I can park here from, from this time to this time, and on the weekends, I get a little extra bonus, this, this day longer. How, you know, I mean, I'm just walking past and I'm just kinda like observing from, you know, from, from the outside. Have you seen a, a significant difference in, in the ability to, to find a parking spot there because of, of the signs?
No, I, we haven't had the reports. Uh, and that, and that's an interesting scenario you bring up, sir, because we, we have a very, very similar situation up on the ridge, where, you know, the northeast ridge was designed, and the roads were designed with a thoughtful idea to be 30-foot wide as a fire break. But part of the challenge we had there is it didn't provide on-street parking for the three community centers that those homes have up there. And the other problem it created is it created these 15-foot wide roadways, these travelways that people were taking to be autobots, right? So they're having excessive speeds. So we eventually striped some areas of those next to the three community areas, including the one of Viewpoint, which is the townhomes, and down at the Mission Blue Center, and then down at Altmark Condominiums. And we found, we had, we had a couple of different benefits there. Number one, we slowed speeds down, because during the day, we had cars parked, and people felt like, oh, the road's a little narrower, I can't just, you know, haul through here, like I'm, I'm on the autobahn in Germany. Uh, and then we had more parking for events, particularly at Mission Blue, is where we had the biggest impact there, because that parking lot easily gets overflowed when you have, you know, say, a softball game going on, and you have some event at the center itself. And so that works, but, and then having the restriction between two to four makes good sense. But I don't know that we could translate that into a true residential neighborhood. That, that would be the challenge, because in those cases where some of the homes we've talked about before, where they just flat out don't have access to the property.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Randy, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, you know, uh, saying that, yeah, you know, don't park at that certain time. What I'm saying really is like, you know, you put out a sign, and that the sign, people pay attention to it. You know, I mean, not everyone's gonna pay attention, but I think for the most part, a lot of people do. And, and, and I'm just wondering, like, well, if there was a, a sign that had, you know, this is permit parking, that, that people would think twice about parking there without a permit.
I, I think that Chief Macias and Commander Garcia's troops do a fine job of ensuring that happens.
Okay. So, you know, can, you know, getting into, like, what would all you have, have said? You know, Madison, you know, bringing up the idea about the street cleaning, and that, that, you know, having to move your car, and that could be an inconvenience. And if you're, you know, there, there are a lot of folks that don't have a driveway, don't have the garage. Um, hey. You know, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't seem like we have a real issue with needing to clean those streets. And, and it seemed like we're all of us are in agreement that, that we shouldn't use street cleaning as a means to, to alleviate parking on the street. Um, so even though that was like, if you look at the survey, right, and you see the responses, I mean, that was, that was the biggest one for strongly support, is to have that. But of course, you know, we're on the council, and we do all that additional work and, and thinking about all these different parts of our community. And whereas, you know, when people are doing a survey, they're not, they're thinking about themselves, right? And so, um, even though that, that was a, you know, a strong support, I personally, you know, I, I don't think that would be a good idea for the community. But I strongly recommend, you know, like you have, Madam Mayor, you know, implementing some kind of permit process. That, that makes sense. And, um, because, you know, by having that permit process, it, it, it gives, I think, a sense of, of, of greater community awareness. You know, you know that this, the cars that are in your neighborhood, and, um, you know, how we implement the, the program? I, I think, you know, maybe doing a pilot program makes sense, but I don't think we should put it on a street that councilmembers live on. I think, I think we should, you know, have it be separate, even though Tulari is probably the worst, but, you know, I think it, it should be on a, on a, on a different street. Um, though, you know, I'd also, you know, think like, you know, like, Carrie, you were saying that, you know, how do we come up with something that's fair? And, you know, typically when we have like a big item, and, and, and parking is one of the, the, the most difficult, right? And, and, you know, potentially, you know, conflicting issues that we would ever deal with. Um, but, you know, we, we go out and hire consultants, right, to, who has expertise in that field. And then work with staff in the community to really solicit that, that feedback. I, I, I think, you know, we really shouldn't move forward with any, any kind of, like, program until we really get that, that community input. And I think we, as a council, should direct staff to, uh, to go and hire someone to do that, 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 that necessary work with the community that, that is needed.
Okay, before, before we go in a second round of comments, because I'd like to go through a whole second round. We have one more member of the public, and this is, this is it. We are in council discussions. Michelle, you've got two minutes, that's it. Please, make it short.
I'm sorry, I came in late, but I did not want to miss this part. I think if we made, um, an effort, one clean sweep of every single street in town, and then three days later, ticket any cars that are still there, that we would really raise awareness of the issue. Because I know people who have left their cars on the street for months, some of them are near and dear to you. Um, and it wasn't until I reported them that their car got moved. But had they had street cleaning, that car would have been moved, because it was really obvious that it had been there for months. And so I think if we made a concerted effort, we did, street by street, every single street in town, go look for those cars that sit there, tag them, move them, three days later, move them. And maybe we might have to do that twice, but I think that would alleviate a lot of the, uh, deadwood on the streets before we had to take more extreme measures of, uh, you know, having street cleaning on King's Road, or Sierra Point Road, or having parking permits. And I think that would just be a step that we should take, it would be reasonable to do. Um, it would require some concerted effort and planning, but there's not all that many streets in Brisbane to be covered. So that's my suggestion. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, so I'm gonna start again, we'll go through everybody one more time. I, I understand the idea of a pilot project. What I envision is, is what's happening already. You, you pick Tulari, you're gonna have the cars on Tulari that have too many coming and down and parking on the lower streets. Why wouldn't they? I mean, no-brainer. Um, in terms of councilmember Len, you mentioned a consultant. When I read about another city that was going to take parking permits as an issue to their council, they came up with That was going to take parking permits as an issue to their council, they came up, what I read was all the questions we've been going over. How do you determine how many permits people get? What is what costs? One thing to consider when we talk about, okay, if you have a single-family home with four adults and they all have cars. Maybe after X number of permits, it costs you money. Do you want to pay for the permit, which it may cost you dearly after the first couple permits? And I I would take some of the issues that we have and I would. Send that back to Complete Streets. Let them think about it. Let them work on it. I would also say, I'm not sure we need a consultant. San Francisco's had this in place a long time. How do they determine who gets permits per house? There are, I I think, other cities that have permits and maybe we can just ask them. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. So those are my thoughts. I think the next person going back second round was Councilmember Davis.
I think that, you know, it would be interesting to do what Michelle's suggestion is to, like, you may only need to do. Street sweeping once throughout all of Brisbane. And really, that might clear up, you know, maybe once a year or once every six months. That might hurry up and clean up some of that real fast, just those vehicles. You can figure out all the abandoned vehicles or the vehicles that are dead on the street. And get those sorted out pretty quickly. So that could be something that we could do. I feel like Complete Streets is our consultant. I think Complete Streets really needs projects they can sink their teeth into. And I think that that's the feedback that we get as a council is that Complete Streets really wants to do more than they're doing. And so I think this is like a perfect project for them to really spend time working on. So I'd be hesitant to, you know, to get a consultant, but. I I I also, you know, with what Terry said, there's just so many factors. And how do you figure out what's fair? I think that's the big thing. You also, what Terry didn't mention, which is one thing I was thinking about, was like, well, what about? Do you look at her a a household's capacity to park on their property? How many garages they have? How many driveway spaces they have? Does that, should that determine? And that's, that would motivate people to clear out their garages if. There it that's taken into consideration. I think, you know, you could create a permit program all you want, but it's the parameters in which you impose that really drive behavior. How expensive the permit is, how you determine who gets permits and how many per household. All those things, you could just say you need to have a permit, anyone who wants one applies. It's a hundred bucks and you may just have everyone go up, pay a hundred dollars and nothing really changes because you can apply for unlimited permits. So I think that that's really going to be a hard thing to, a hard thing to sort through, but we need to lean on our complete streets to help us do that.
Councilmember Cunningham?
The one thing we didn't discuss, and I'm just going to throw it in the mix, I haven't changed my my thought process on doing a pilot program to see what happens. I I do agree that. Complete Streets is our consultant, but guest park. Especially, and and it was a very interesting comment from Councilmember Davis. It's like, okay, so, you know, maybe that is criteria. It's going to make a lot of work for staff if. You know, everybody applying for a permit at some point has to say, well, you've got two-car garage and, in my case, room for six cars to park off-street. You know, I don't need a permit, but what about guests? How do we handle guest parking on in areas where there is no off-street parking for the homeowner to begin with, not even one space? So that's just another thing I wanted to throw in the hopper. Complicate matters just because I can.
Councilmember O'Connell?
I wanted to. Reiterate that Complete Streets is our consultant. And there is no consultant that's going to come into this city and know our topography, our streets. Our citizens, the way we do, no matter how many. Reach outs or, you know, studying that goes on. You know, our residents and our people know better than anybody who we we could hire and. We just don't have the money to do that. I mean. We we don't really have the money to do that. So I would not be in favor of hiring a consultant to try to work a program for us. I think we need to look at it from a homegrown perspective.
Thank you. Councilmember Lance?
Yeah, you know, yeah, great feedback. You know, you, you guys are like rattled off just like a ton of things, right? You know, I mean, it's, there's a lot there. And like you said, Karen, I mean, it's complicated. And no disrespect to the Complete Streets and Safety Committee. They do a great job. And what they've been able to to present to us, you know, through staff. Is extremely helpful and and we're, you know, like at this point where, okay, we got seventy percent of the community saying, you need to do something. You know, we hired an affordable housing consultant for a reason. Because not that they know our community better, but, you know, they have, you know, an expertise. To then take community feedback and be able to then put forth a plan that 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 makes sense. And, you know, granted, all of you are saying, hey, I haven't, but three of the council members, right, are saying like, the Complete Streets and Safety Committee, they are our consultants. And, you know, I just have, this is, you know, a difference of opinion. I think they're extremely vital in being that that ear and that voice in this particular area. But if we're gonna do something and it's gonna be, you know, really detailed, because it's got to be detailed. To be able to handle all of this stuff you all just said. You need, you need someone who's professional, right? And that's what they do. And, you know, how much that would cost, you know, have that come back to the council, have stewards say, okay, here's the cost and. You know, here's our budget and does that make sense? You know, and maybe some of that that, you know, we address. You know, a few months down the line when we're looking at our budget in June. And, you know, we'll make the decision then. Is that, is that a priority for us? When you get right down to it, there's never like, you know, we're at a point where you couldn't hire a consultant for a hundred thousand bucks and say you don't have money. City's got the money. It's really, do we, you know, think that this is a high priority for us? And if we think it's a high priority, then we put the money in there. And if we don't think it's that high priority, or we don't think it's it's necessary, then then we don't do it. All right, thank you.
Okay, so circling back, I'm just going to make a suggestion. We have nothing to lose by sending this back to Complete Streets and having them come back to us with some more refined suggestions on how to proceed. In deference to Councilmember Lance, if at the point we receive the suggestions, we feel like it's inadequate, we could always hire a consultant, but I think we need to start somewhere and I I agree. That our Complete Streets Committee is certainly familiar with the problem and the areas and. They've already looked at this. They they, I would say wisely deferred to the council to say, well, give us an idea more what you want before we spend a lot of time on. And so I I would send it back to them and make it a priority that they work on that and come back to us as soon as possible. Does that sound reasonable?
It does to me, and I think our Complete Streets have done an excellent job on just about everything they put their hands on. I think unfortunately in the past, we haven't given them enough accurate direction, but every time we do give them accurate direction, they come back with an excellent product.
Yes, I agree.
So if we gave them a direction that we would like for them to investigate a potential permit. System for Brisbane, whether, A, whether it should be a pilot project and how that would work. Or if it was. If it, if it was a permit process. Us without a pilot project, how that would be rolled out, how many permits for residents. Whether there was a cap and beyond that, there could be additional ones at a cost. And then.
Don't forget our guests too, Madam Mayor.
Pardon me?
And don't forget our guests too, Madam Mayor. I think that's.
Yes, yes, there there could be guest permit potentially. But also what type of enforcement, if at all, that we would want on a permit? Councilmember O'Connell?
One thing I think that we really need to find out what the actual capacity is of our streets for parking. So, you know. You know, this section of whatever street, there are twenty-five off-street parking places. And then maybe that gets divvied up among however many homes are on that street. Because we can't be permitting more parking than we have capacity for.
Good point, very good.
Something that I think Complete Streets is going to need to do, and we're going to need to, you know, look at aerial photos and. And decide how much capacity our city has, because it just wouldn't be fair to be overselling. Capacity.
And you may want to like, say, let's say twenty-five is a capacity on a certain part of the street, right? Then you may want to do a little bit less, but then now you're getting into a whole ordeal of, oh, I've got, my permit is only good for Sierra Point. This whatever hundred block of Sierra Point, three hundred block of Sierra. And what happens if I go visit Terry and I need to park over in front of her house? I don't have a three hundred block of Sierra Point, you know what I'm saying? But I think maybe if you do citywide, you say we have two thousand parking spots, you may only want to issue out. Eighteen hundred so that there is room if there's guests or an event or whatever it may be, people come into town and they have places to park. But I think we should really, instead of getting into all those nuts and bolts. We should send it back and have staff really give robust feedback about all the things that we've said tonight, because there's a lot, and then really let them. You know, munch on this and see what they come up with.
I was just going to say, and also check in with some other cities that have permits and see how they're they're doing it. Let's not start from scratch. Let's maybe start with that. First of all, how are they handling the process? Let's. Learn from their mistake. Councilmember Lance?
Yeah, yeah, you know, that was someone I was just going to suggest. I think that's an excellent idea. There's. You know, we're not the only city that has parking issues and and talking about these types of things. Most cities have. You know, dealt with it and then, you know, put together a program or not. That, you know, that, you know, works for them. You know, I have a question. I guess it's for Karen, in that, or maybe it's Mario, that if you have a permit program. Does that then also improve the enforcement process for folks that park their vehicles? Longer than expected, you know, we have, so, you know, I mean, granted, you know, you're not supposed to park. Over a certain amount of days and get a ticket, you know, it's all on the the complaint, you know, basis, but, you know, you know, maybe we're getting beyond a complaint. Type process. And maybe if 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 that was kind of something that you all talked, or Karen, you talked about with Complete Streets. To evaluate that, so that maybe we're not doing a complaint base, maybe it's it's all permit and. And, you know, you have to follow the rules. If you don't follow the rules, you you do get the ticket.
Councilmember Lance, I think. Yeah, I think that the permit program wouldn't actually give them any passes to park in excess of seventy-two hours. Those rules still play a role, so. Although it'd be easier to identify those vehicles that do belong to a resident or someone in town, versus sometimes we get. Complaints and we run the plate out. They are not, they don't live in town, they're out of town, but then once we put the red tag on, it's gone the next day. We never identify that car. If it actually is a resident or it's someone that's visiting and, so it wouldn't bypass the seventy-two.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, could the permit program maybe enhance that or or or, you know, you know, many times you you'll have a car that'll be parked there for. Five days and if someone doesn't call it in, it just stays there, right? And there's no, you guys don't tag it, correct?
Correct. It's on a complaint basis most of the time.
Yeah, so, you know, so I'm putting this out there to all councilmembers. Should should we also be looking at, you know, rethinking our complaint? Basis type of process for dealing with cars that that are. And should we look at something that's. Got fourteen that.
Okay, Councilmember Davis, you've had your hand up.
Thank you. One other thing to follow up on what you said, Colleen. Oh, hold on, my vacuum's going loud. I don't know if you guys can hear that, but it's really loud in my house. My vacuum's going off. So I I'm curious if staff could also investigate for those, for those cities that do parking. I don't know if this is going to be easy information to access, but it'd be great to know for the cities that have a parking permit. How much does it cost for that city to enforce that program? Per, on a per parking permit cost? So divided up by the amount of parking permits there are and how much it costs annually to see like per permit, what is the cost to the city? Because I think that that's also really, really important information. I would hate for us to. Set up some type of system and try to get everyone on board with something that financially is going to be too much for us to try to support. On enforcement, on, you know, issuing permits, on all that. It would be interesting to know, you know, what really, what what are those on-the-ground costs?
Councilmember Cunningham, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just just real quick, there's one one point I forgot to sort of throw in at this mix is that. I'm not sure how much of an issue it is now, but I know at some point. People using Brisbane as their long-term parking lot for the airport was huge. And so the parking permits would certainly flush that out as well, especially if we we do some light encouragement of people. It's like. You know, if the car's been there longer than seventy-two hours and you know it's not your next door neighbor's car, call it in. You know, we don't want neighbors being jobbers, as we would call them in Australia, but. At least if you know that's a stranger, a strange car, hasn't, doesn't belong on this street and you see people get out and then get into an Uber, go to the airport and, you know, we're stuck with their vehicle for their vacation.
Any other comments? No? Karen and Randy, does that provide adequate and command? Under Garcia, adequate information? And Clay? Anyone else involved staff? Are there any questions staff has of the council that we didn't cover that you would want to know? Yes, Karen?
I just have one. I understand council is not very interested in looking at street sweeping and using that to. Increase spaces, parking spaces on the street, but they do want committee, Complete Streets Committee to pursue. Find out what other cities are doing and give more detail about parking permit programs exist and what they would propose. But you didn't speak much about the VR campaign, you know, be a star, move a car, and whether you wanted. Try that first off or flush it out. And we think it's pretty low cost to be done with.
I I think the people in in town who are not the problem are going to be all excited about the campaign and. You you're not going to make a dent with the scofflaws. It's just going to go on.
I think a better campaign.
So I I'd like.
Reporting vehicles that aren't moving, like, have you seen a vehicle on your street that has seventy-two hours? This is how you report. We're encouraging you to report because. We're trying to tackle this issue. I think that's a better campaign.
Well, you know, I think, oh, I'm sorry. So.
I was just going to say, long-term, non-operational vehicle.
You know, I I I thought that was kind of a neat suggestion, Karen. You know, I I like the the. Like the slogan. I I think, you know, coming out with, you know, some carrots first is is always a good thing. And but I agree with you, Madison, that eventually you, we're going to have to get to that point where, yeah, you need to be more involved, I guess. And, you know, making sure that that folks don't put their vehicles for a long time. But, yeah, I I I like it. But, uh, yeah, I, 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 I like it and I, I, I don't see any harm in doing it. I think, I think you might get some folks who will think about it and go, okay, yeah, you're right. I, I shouldn't, um, leave my vehicle there longer than I should.
Randy, you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, ma'am. So the only question I would ask, and I, I guess the comment I would make too is it, I'm happy, I think Karen's happy to take this as an informal modification to the Complete Streets Safety Committee work plan. I don't think, I, unless city council agrees differently, I don't think we need a modification or resolution or order anything. But could you give us a sense of the prioritization of this relative to the rest of the work plan items? And perhaps if you could just give us a timing of when you would expect or request that this be brought back to the council with recommendations?
How about we ask it in reverse? When do you think is feasible for it to come back to us? Before the summer break or after the summer break?
That, that's well played, ma'am. I don't think we could do it before the summer break. Uh, Karen, do you, you have thoughts on that towards the fall perhaps?
That seems safer, yes. That's what came to mind for me.
So six months perhaps? Does that feel right? I'm sorry, I'm communicating with Karen at the same time. I apologize. Okay, so six month issue, would that, would that satisfy the council's desires?
And considering there was a work plan already in effect, but this is an older item, can we just put it back to the top of the list for now and, and take care of this first?
I'm sure the committee's happy to work at the council's pleasure. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Enough said. Thank you very much. Now we're moving on. Staff reports. City manager?
So we've got a few items, uh, to go over tonight. Um, our annual spring compost giveaway started today. Uh, compost is available on San Francisco Avenue near Inyo, below the community garden while supplies last. Residents only. Uh, bring your own shovel and container and take only what you need. Thanks to South San Francisco scavengers for making this giveaway possible. They do it as a thank you to the community for working on collecting food scraps and yard waste to help close the loop in the waste system. We are doing our first, uh, lifeguard training course, um, in a couple of years. Um, yeah, last one was actually in February of twenty twenty, just before the pandemic. Um, this, uh, the lifeguard training course is open to the public, anybody over the age of fifteen. Um, it's gonna be on the dates of May thirteenth through fifteenth, uh, six to ten PM on Friday and eight to five on Saturday and Sunday. Um, attendance at every class is required. You can register online at brisbaneca.org/lifeguard. Our architect for our library, uh, that, uh, we opened last year, um, Seagull Strain has, um, placed our, the library up for an award, uh, so we're encouraging residents, uh, if they would like to, to go online and, um, vote for them. Um, you can head to brisbaneca.org for more information. The vote, the voting ends on April fifteenth. Uh, Tuesday, April twelfth from twelve to one, um, coping with stress through self-care, a presentation by the Star Vista Crisis, Crisis Center. Uh, you can join Star Vista's Facebook livestream on Tuesday, April twelfth, twelve to one. Learn ways in which you can help yourself and our loved ones when life stressors are present. Hosted by Brooke Pollard, associate clinical social worker and program manager of the clinical services at Star Vista's crisis program. Easter is coming soon. Um, we're gonna have the Brisbane Lions Club Annual, uh, Easter Acre Hunt. Uh, it'll be at Lippman Middle School on April seventeenth at one PM. Uh, that's Easter Sunday. Um, five and under will be on the soccer field and six and older will be on the school playground. The, uh, annual habitat restoration day will be held on April twenty-third, um, from nine thirty to twelve thirty. That's a Saturday. Um, this is being brought to you by the city of Brisbane and San Bruno Mountain Watch. Um, and sponsored by the South San Francisco Scavenger Company. Uh, details and registration are at the Mountain Watch, www.mountainwatch.org. Hydrant Painting and Restoration, um, this is a program that's been in Brisbane for many years, many decades at this point. Um, we're gonna be doing a day or a weekend, June, May fourteenth and fifteenth. Uh, as we continue the tradition of painting Brisbane's historic hydrants, all supplies will be provided participating artists courtesy of the Brisbane Parks and Recreation Department. Just show up ready to paint, wearing clothes you don't mind getting messy because it's bound to happen. Anyone interested in designing or restoring a hydrant must submit an application to participate by April twenty-eighth. You can visit brisbaneca.org/hydrants for more details. And then finally, uh, the, uh, Brisbane Dance Workshop, uh, will be, uh, doing their performance on Sunday, May fifteenth. It's called Oh, The Places. Yeah, it will be at two thirty and it'll be done outdoors at the Mission Blue Center. Good to see a lot of, um, long-term, um, community events starting to, um, happen again. So that's tonight's report.
Thank you. We move on to our council matters, the, uh, subcommittee report. How about Councilmember Lentz? You wanna start?
All right, uh, let's see. So it's not really a subcommittee, um, calling, but you know, you and I attended the, um, the, I guess the, um, it was an exchange with Sustainable San Mateo County. They gave us, uh, and they showed us our, uh, their dashboard, how they, you know, address sustainability issues, dealing with, um, you know, water and housing and, you know, energy, uh, generation. Um, you know, they do that for every city. They gave, uh, Superstate Evaluation to kind of fool them on some of the ways that they, you know, gathered the data, wasn't exactly, you know, they, they use kind of a, you know, you know, one-size-fits-all approach. And we said that, you know, every city's different, especially us, and, you know, maybe, uh, you know, you know, we do those numbers that, that may get more appropriate for what's really going on in our town. But then they also recognized us as being a leader in many sustainability aspects. And that, that was, that was really cool to, to hear from them. And anything else you wanna add to that?
Water consumption was a big one, but, but it's unclear their methodology and I think Clay had mentioned that they may be including the commercial accounts we have and it, it, it all got sorted out in residential consumption. So that one, we're not sure how accurate that is, but they also brought up other cities in the peninsula adopting, uh, um, higher minimum wages and suggested Brisbane consider that. That's all I have to add to.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, Tara, you and I, uh, had a, we interviewed the three consultants for the, um, open space and recreation plan for Sierra Point. Do you wanna, um, provide the, the update on that?
Well, we gave recommendations to the, uh, staff to reach out to the candidates. I don't think, unless staff is ready to say anything, that we really should talk about that more. They were all three very good candidates. Um, but I wouldn't think that staff would want us to really discuss that process anymore. And I'm looking at staff to get a nod of that.
I'll, I'll nod. We're, we're, we're hopeful to bring that back to you at the April twenty-first meeting, but, um, we still have some, um, some, you know, fine tuning and contract negotiation.
That, that's correct. And ma'am, I, I will note, I, I don't see a Noreen Leek on here, but we, Noreen and I did meet with the professional that you deem the most qualified and we have had discussions. And we were refining both their scope and fee and we're hoping to have that back to you in the near future.
Great. Thank you.
And I think that was it, Madam Mayor.
Um, Cliff, you and I had an infrastructure subcommittee.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
Twenty-eighths. You want, you wanna do that or you want me to jump in?
You can do it.
Okay, well, we, we met discussing the availability of potentially getting some federal funds. Um, we looked at Bay Shore traffic calming. We looked at other capital improvement projects on Randy's list. Um, we talked about maximizing federal dollars for the larger projects since they, they seem to prefer applications for larger projects. Um, one of them we talked about was the Glen Park Lift Station because that assists firefighting on the Upper Street. And so that, that's going to be the, the big project submitted. And in terms of Bay Shore, I think we'll be coming back to the council with some future discussion on that because we discussed quite a few different ideas and that's all I'm gonna say about it.
Yes. Well, well said, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Connell, you wanna report out?
I have nothing else to report.
Okay. Councilmember Cunningham?
Thank you. Um, we have had, excuse me, two public art subcommittee meetings in the last week and a half. And, uh, we have identified quite a nice project that we will be bringing information to, uh, city council as a whole fairly soon, but be excited. Group is working really well together. And some of the ideas that are being floated around, um, are really quite fabulous.
Sounds exciting.
Yeah, I must.
Can't wait to see or hear what it is.
Madison, wanna add anything?
Um, yeah, I'll just say we're looking for, we're putting together an RFP for a, um, a consultant to help us choose an artist and to manage community input process. So we're working on that RFP now. And we're simultaneously reviewing a number of cities' public art master plan um, in an effort to develop our own Brisbane, City of Brisbane master plan um, as a foundation that we'll then use for all our projects going forward. Um, from there, like, using that as a foundation, we can then build a master plan for the Baylands or a master plan, you know, for the Marina or something like that. But it's good to have one full, what is Brisbane's vision for art? First and foremost, and then how do you apply that to different parts of Brisbane? So we're just really taking a deep dive into all different cities. I wanna say there's like ten different cities. Um, and so we're switching off meetings. So one meeting, we're taking two cities comparing and contrasting those master plans. Um, and some of these documents are relatively big. Some of them are like seventy-five pages. And we're going through and saying, hey, I like this. I don't like that. Um, so that we can also identify like where, how the group feels about art as a whole and then also thinking about, um, how we would develop an RFP for a consultant to help us put together that master plan and then we can see which consultants worked on which master plan. So if there are master plans that we really like, we can invite those consultants to apply. Um, so I think like as a committee, we realize we really need to get that, that foundation down about how we really think about art and what it means to us first. And then use that as a basis to plan things in the future. So it's a deep dive. Um, and so one meeting, we're doing that and then, then two weeks later, then we're talking about the current project that we have going on. So we're switching on and off, um, between those two subjects.
Sounds like a really good approach.
It, it's really, it's really quite fun and, and sort of just thinking about it along the lines of, you know, we have some small projects to work on, some quaint projects to work on. And then there's the thought of, to your point, the Baylands and the, the, the bigger projects that we're doing. So, yeah. But, oh, it's good fun. Good fun. Thank you.
Anything else to report on? Councilmember Cunningham or Davis? No? Okay. So I have, uh, I have one on March twenty-fourth, I have Peninsula Clean and Energy and PCE entered into yet another power purchase because they're striving for that twenty-four seven power. And, uh, this one was with Imperial Geothermal, fifteen-year contract commencing twenty-twenty-three. This is the second geothermal project added to PCE's portfolio, which is really important because geothermal is just so immensely twenty-four seven. So that's something that, uh, they're still striving to find more sources of geothermal in the future. So that's all I have. We're moving on then to, uh, written communications. City clerk, did we receive any written communications?
Ms. Madam Mayor, uh, the council received a correspondence from Emile Manara, three twenty-three about the Brisbane Village Shopping Centre block and Anya Miller today regarding the audit press release on Marina.
Okay, thank you. And oral communications, number two, do we have any members of the public wishing to make public comment at this time?
I have a raised hand from Barbara Evil.
Barbara, go ahead.
Hey, I just wanted to say, um, I have forgotten to mention earlier that we actually do have things on the book that says people cannot use their garage for storage. And, um, it, it's on the book now, so we could choose to enforce that among other things. Um, just wanted to point that out. Thanks. Bye.
That being said, we have any other members of the public?
There are no other members of the public wishing to make public comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you all. Good meeting. This meeting is adjourned at nine seventeen PM. Have a good weekend.